Good morning. We will call the meeting to order. First item is the approval of the agenda.
What was the approval?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And carried. No citizens to be heard, approval of minutes of July 2nd and July 9th, 2013.
Hello. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carried. Nate, you're on. We'll go to you, Assistant County Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to wait for that appropriate time for this one. There was a lot of media interest in a portion of it.
Okay, thank you. We will wait, Nate, until that time. At this time, we have a couple of committee reports. Frank?
I just had Soil and Water Conservation District there. They're getting concerns about the budget and stuff like that. That's about their main concern there in that one.
Who was that?
Soil and Water Conservation, you know. They submitted their budget too, where they're getting increases in rent and stuff, so. Other than that, just tended the fair for a couple of days. That's it.
John?
Yeah, the last week after our board meeting, we had a highway tracking meeting again. And we, no, was that after?
Yeah.
Okay, it's SWAC before, yeah. And we continued to work on some of the things that will be presented here with the, you know, later today here, the wheelage tax and the five-year road construction plan. So I think we'll hear about it all in a little bit. That evening, it was the AG subcommittee for the diversion. And we spent most of the time talking there about the insurance, crop insurance, that we'd be offering to the farmers in the flooded, in the staging area. And whenever the diversion is used, the crop insurance, federal crop insurance won't cover, won't cover the losses. So there has to be some kind of assurance that farmers will be covered during those times when the crop insurance does not cover. And of course, it's not going to be a big deal if we only get, only use it once in ten years, but we don't know how often it would be, would be used. It's a complicated thing because you, with crop insurance, if you get zero production some years, you, you know, you lower what you can then insure yourself for the next year. So it's a, it's a complicated system, and we're trying to figure out. We can, it sounds like we can buy riders to the existing insurance. The authority could buy a rider on it. They also could self-insure and pay out directly if there's a loss. And I think the farmers involved would prefer there be a rider because they would trust the power of the company over the, over the taxing authority here. So that's still to be worked on. We also then, on the fair was a primary thing for me last week, but we had a number of other things as well. There was a meeting with the Heritage Society for, on the fundraising committee for the new project. And we're about to enter in a $2,000, a $2 million fund camp, funding campaign for exhibit and other things. There was also a land management meeting with the diversion and the authority meeting as well last Thursday. With land management, we were covering the normal things we've gone over each, each time, but they did present some of what we had worked on with the AG subcommittee on the Tuesday night. All day on Friday, I was involved with the Lakes and Prairies Committee Action Planning, long-term planning. Wayne was also at that. And it was, it was a good day that, to look at realities of what the cap agencies are facing with the cutbacks and looking at some new possibilities for funding, together with United Way and the Impact Foundation and so on. So there's some encouraging thoughts there for some future collaborations that might be, that might work. At the fair, there was the Century Farm presentation that was made at noon or 1:00 on Sunday. And otherwise, all the normal, normal activities of the fair. It was, I think, a good fair. It was hot and it rained some, but there was, I think, pretty good, pretty good turnout and a good celebration of the 100th year. So that was, that was all positive. So that's all.
We will go back to the regular agenda at this time. And Darren Brooke, Jennifer Pearson, Long-Term Disability. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. Nice to have you with us.
I get to start the day off with you guys. Right. I'm going to let Jennifer run with this one. She's kind of headed up this whole project here and brought it to the insurance committee. And so I'll turn it over to you.
Well, Mr. Chair, in the packet that we sent out was a memo simply indicating that we have received word from our agent of, agent of record, which is Oaks Anchor, the municipal pool, who administers our current long-term disability product through Assurant. And they had received some high rate increases from Assurant to certain members of the municipal pool that they weren't comfortable passing along to the members. So they went out and did a formal request for proposal to see what other offerings were out there. The final two that came back to them were Assurant as well as a company called Madison National Life. They did do final interviews with both companies and did come out with Madison National Life as offering them rates that they could pass on to their customers that were a little bit better than Assurant. They are also going to match the contract that we currently have with Assurant. Also, we gave them a census of our employees and they did come back with a 15% rate reduction as well with the current rates that we have. That would actually go into effect with the contract if it's approved as of August 1st of this year. And then those rates would be guaranteed through January 1st of 2016. And then going forward, of course, we'd be rerated accordingly with two-year contracts. So we did bring this to the insurance committee and we did bring their recommendation of moving over to Madison National and signing a contract with them. We'd like to bring that forward to the board for final approval.
Today?
Yeah. The, one of the questions, if an employee selects to purchase a long-term benefit, if that employee were to leave the county, can they continue to own that policy?
It is portable.
Okay, it is portable?
Yeah, they can take it with them. They just sign up through them.
Okay. Which is pretty important, I think, to have that option. Well, Mr. Chairman, we, our insurance committee did go through this and I think it kind of passed unanimously amongst us that we should move forward with this. And so if there's other comments, I would move that we approve the change.
One second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question on the insurance too. Are dental insurance changed? Not, yeah, changed, right? Was it automatic?
Dental Service Corporation, they're actually discontinuing.
They're dissolving.
They're dissolving.
Yeah.
So basically Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Dakota, which kind of was DSC, kind of one of the, so they took over.
So we use the same cards and everything?
Yes.
We didn't get new cards, I don't think, did we?
No, no, no. They just, Blue Cross Blue Shield just took over for DSC. Will continue as DSC offered. And then at the first of the year, of course, the new renewal will come. But we didn't have any changes. And if we have new cards, it would be at the first of the year if we just sign with Blue Cross North Dakota going forward.
Okay, I was just wondering if her old cards were still viable.
Yeah.
Are we getting any information back in on health insurance, with the increase maybe?
We're scheduled to receive that on August 13th.
Hearing anything yet? That it's going to go higher?
We haven't, let's say we haven't officially heard anything, but it's, well, we don't know. And August 13th is when we'll find out our new rates. So I don't anticipate it going down at all, I'll say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, can we go to you for your media report?
Okay, yeah.
You're just a little early and you said you should wait.
Let's see, well, yeah, I just, you know, I, just the one item on there I know was all over the news last week, so I figured they might want to be here today. Again, we had the highway tracking meeting after last week's board meeting, of which those topics, we'll get into further discussion on them here today. Diversion Authority Outreach Meeting was held last Wednesday. And of course, there was discussion at that meeting regarding the need to probably better inform all of the commissions and councils who are members of this. Judging by the questions that were raised in light of the new design agreement that the Morhead City Council had, there was clearly a lack of information that was being provided. So I think we're going to do, try to do a better job in getting out to, and that would be also then, including maybe a quarterly report to each of the boards, which would be also this county board. And that'd probably come from our project design team. And then on the diversion authority itself, that was again, the primary discussion was on those issues and getting ready. We'll be moving forward with the, the design agreement did, was approved by both Fargo and Morhead, so that is moving forward. The next step now will be to make the next amendment to the joint powers agreement, which stipulates what the funding would be for the calendar year 2014, which actually runs from September of this year to August of next year, I believe, is the date that that works. And our side of the river has made it clear that we want to make sure that the language is, is in there, that whatever we pay up from where we share those costs with the city right now in terms of a contribution to that, that that is the only payment that we're committed to. You know, until the legislature would do otherwise and that we would have no further financial commitment because of our lack of being able to raise funds like North Dakota and Cass County and Fargo has. So we're going to make sure that that, that language is inserted. And I've talked with the diversion authority chairman and he understands that. And I think we shouldn't have any problem getting that to our satisfaction. And that is, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Chief.
Brian. At that meeting, Morhead did speak. There was, I mean, in a discussion in regards to, and Commissioner Campbell did address that as well. And I thought did just an extremely good job of balancing everybody's feelings out on that. You did just a very good job of explaining that.
Thank you.
That was a large group and an important presentation. He showed support for Morhead, but he showed the importance of moving forward. I was just impressed.
Thank you. Chief.
Let's see, I, last week I had greater Fargo-Morhead EDC Executive Committee and we had updates on all the things they've got going on, which is quite a bit. One of the things they talked about was a small manufacturer that's looking, has been looking anywhere from Clay County all the way out to Jamesville, North Dakota. And it sounds like they've kind of narrowed it down to either Barnesville or Castleton. So I thought that was good news that, you know, somebody on the Minnesota side isn't running for, for that. And then yesterday I had a meeting of the area agency on aging and, I mean, you know, we had discussed a lot of things there too, but sequestration is, you know, taking a toll on services to the elderly and, you know, so, you know, each, we have nine counties in the west-central region here. And we talked about, you know, our contributions and, you know, to maintain things the way they were, we need a 17% increase, which isn't, you know, in terms of dollars, isn't a lot. But we kind of agreed that what we were proposed to our counties is a 10% increase because figured, you know, some of that pain is going to have to be felt. It's just the way it is. And a 10% increase for Clay County, it's based on population out of those nine counties. And of course, our senior population is the highest of those nine counties with the exception of Otter Tail. And for us, the 10% increase would, would mean about a $600 increase for, for the year in what we can figure. So that was it for me.
Governor?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a comment and follow, regarding the economic development part of it. And I, I just think it's, would be nice to congratulate Morhead in getting their, this new hotel that's coming into Morhead. I thought that was, there was, they were in quite competition with West Fargo on that. And I think the fact that the city and the county and the school district, we had gotten together to create some incentives to bring businesses here, I think it's, that's the first step in showing that that can pay off. And I just wanted to congratulate Morhead and the Morhead Business Association, who was also pushing it forward.
Good, thank you. On Friday, July 12th, I had Lakes and Prairies Board of Directors meeting. John spoke on that. The only thing I would add to that, under the director's report, there was a great deal of discussion regarding head start. And on July 10th, I was in Ada and I stopped at the Wild Rice Watershed District meeting. I was there for about an hour and most interesting.
I guess you and I were at the Morkin picnic too.
Yes, we were.
Yeah. Great time.
We were, we were at Warren's party. Very good. Nate, the cameras are here. You're on.
The cameras are on.
Nathan Gannon, our Assistant County Engineer, has three items for us to go over. And the third one is rather interesting. Fire away, Nate. Good morning.
Good morning. Just to start with the first item, and that would be review and approval of the five-year county construction plan. It will look very familiar to you as when we did the bonding. The first three years of the bonding projects are all included in this. So these years, the first three years will be very similar. 2013 is well underway so that the projects that you see on the first page are all under construction or will be shortly under construction. And the dollar values that are, that are listed in the estimated cost have been updated to today's construction estimates based on overruns and, and changes to the projects. Things are going very well in this year's construction. We haven't had a whole lot of major overruns, just, just one on a, on one of the overlay projects of about $100,000.
You have County 17 out there in West Glendon. Isn't County 17 being re-done too?
It is. It's a project number, two, actually, two. The three is a bridge replacement and that's actually.
Oh, okay, there it is on the side. I'm looking at the, unlocated, excuse me.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, the first, the first column is project number, then the second column is the highway.
Is that going to be going on next month? Or when is that going on? There's someone concerned about the Glendon Parade because they line up on that road.
When is the Glendon Parade?
It's the second week in August.
Okay.
I don't know, doesn't have anything to serve here, stuff here, but they line up on that road, I know.
Okay. One thing that we could do, the contractor, as a part of that project, the contractor's also going to be overlaying two, 11, 31, the box culvert on 19. So there might be a way to shift around a little bit to make sure that we're not there at the same time. This will be about the same timeframe that this project will be going on.
It's on Saturday, so they probably wouldn't be working, but just come out of being the road being available, so.
They're, they're actually behind and that's why they're not already here. So there's a good chance that they will be working on Saturday.
Okay.
But now that I know that, that's the second weekend in August.
I'd have to check for sure, but yeah.
And we can make sure that we don't conflict.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. So, so like I said, 2013 is, is pretty well set and all the projects are in, under contract. 2014, this will be our, our large grading year. We'll be grading County 18 from State 75 all the way out to a mile east of, of County 11, about five and a half miles. That'll be probably our main, major project in that year, prepping it for asphalt paving in 2015. County 52 is also on the, on the project on the, the south end where we tie in from Trunk Highway 9 up to Clay County 55. That'll be another grading project right around the Barnesville Airport. And then we've got County 3, past the, past the courthouse and the family services center here. That'll be a mill and overlay. We'll start it down at Center Avenue and take it all the way up to County 18. You can see the funding on that project is shown at half. We are anticipating 50% of the funding for that project to come from the city of Morhead. We have talked to them about this. They're in agreement. We need to go out and do some more scoping work on it to refine the details of the project, but the concept is essentially set as to what we're going to be doing there.
Nate, on that project, there's, there's nothing underground that Morhead would need to do prior to us doing that, is there?
They haven't indicated that they would have anything. There may be some residents along County 3 that probably could or would want to look at doing their individual sewer lines and making sure that their connections are good. We've been in talks with the city of Morhead to, to get a letter put out so that that could be done beginning this fall.
Before then.
And up to the project start. That would be the only underground unless, unless we run into problems with the storm sewers. We haven't run a camera through them yet. That would be the only other thing.
I've got two questions. One about crossing the railroad. Is the railroad on deck with us or isn't there a, if we're starting at Center Avenue, we got?
Okay. We would have to get a permit from them to do that. And, and we do that typically on all of our projects.
But don't they do the, the work actually? Or maybe they're already done what they need to do there?
No, we would, we would.
Between the tracks and so on.
We would, we would run our mill right up to the tracks and then we would, we would mill that material away and pave it back in. We do that on, on a lot of our projects. We're doing it on 17 this year in Glendon and we're doing it up in Georgetown as well. All the contractor has to do is apply for some railroad protective liability insurance. We go through, it's about a six to eight week process to notify them and get approval.
Okay. The other question is on, I mean, it's a long stretch of city, city street there. We doing any of the curb and gutter or is there?
That's another part of the scoping that, that we've been looking at. One of the benefits of having all the rain that we did earlier this year is we've been able to go out and identify some of the small problem areas. So we will be removing some of the curb and gutter in that area to, to provide drainage on the street.
Okay. Does that, does that road stay open then when you're doing that?
That's something that we need to consider. In the first about eight blocks, we'd be looking at doing a mill down to the existing concrete and that would leave a four inch.
You're going south to north now?
South to north, sorry. Yep, I always talk south to north. So you're correct. So from, from about Center Avenue north, I think the cutoff is up to school, near the courthouse, there's old concrete. There's four inches of asphalt over the top of that. The problem that we have with milling all of that off at, at one time and then paving it back in is you could end up with, with a drop-off problem from, from one lane to the other. Generally, we try not to have that. We would probably keep it open during, during construction, but the exact phasing and staging of it, we haven't identified yet. But it would probably be open during construction.
Would the plans for that, could it be done by the time school starts up here?
That would, yes. We would definitely try and, and phase the project so that we didn't start before school ended and we got, we got done before it started in the fall.
So this gets to be quite wild out right out here once that school opens up?
And that's, yeah, that's part of our staging. We, we have a little bit more work to do on the staging of that project to, to come up with it. Yep. 2015, after we complete the grading down on Highway 52 from County, or from Trunk Highway 9 up to County 55, we would then place the concrete from 9 up to 55. And then also, we would include the unbonded overlay section from, where we left off on County 21 down to 55, to, to finish that, that entire stretch of roadway off from, from basically Saban all the way down to Barnesville. We would have that completed. We would also pave the concrete on the stretch that we graded the year prior from Trunk Highway 75 out to one mile east of 11. And at the same time, even though it's shown as a separate project, Project 17 and 18 would be tied together. And we would complete from County 3 to State 75, we have some subgrade repair to do out there, which would just basically be some areas that we've seen failure in. We would go in, repair those, remove the asphalt and then pave concrete in there as well.
That's the area right along the beet plant?
That's right in front of the beet plant, correct. Yep.
Well, I would guess we'd have some celebrating in Barnesville once that, Land Baker and Saban, once that road, road is done.
Yeah.
It was probably five years ago, we didn't think we still had a chance. I figured another way to get it done. So there's been a lot of good work done to make that work.
I think Wayne told me he was going to take 052 on the way home from Barnesville. Did you have courage after that?
I did.
You're still shaking a little bit.
Save the county a couple of dollars in my way.
Let me see here, I missed something. 2016, one, one thing to mention too, in 2000, Project Number 20 and Project Number 16, which aren't projects, that kind of shows the, the bond payment going back in. So if you see that in there, you know, that's, that kind of gives you an indication of when we're going to start paying off that bond. And that will start in 2014 with $850,000, as shown in Project 16. Project 20 would be the second bond payment and that would be a million 25,000. So I failed to mention that. 2016 is the year when, when our bond projects will all have been completed and we'll start to do the payoff process. What we're looking at doing in these years is to, to utilize some of our, our bridge bonding, funding through the state and replace a couple of culverts. One would be down on County 56. And then the other one would be down, would be on County 67 in Kurtz Township. They're, they're smaller bridge replacements projects. What we would typically, what we typically do with these is we would tie them in with four to six additional township box culvert replacement projects so we could get a bigger bang for our buck and, and help lighten the burden for the, for the townships on the cost of those projects. County 95, we're also showing. also showing grading, two miles of county ninety-five. We would start one mile north of eighteen and, and go to three miles north of, of eighteen. That's the section where we've got the, the Odyssey on right now. And by then, it'll, it'll be definitely time to, to remove that, that surface and, and grade it.
Does that take us to ninety-three, or does that take us to, no, it goes further than that, that, does it take us right to twenty-six?
Twenty-two, twenty-two.
Takes us to, it goes, uh, yeah, we'll go from-
Twenty-two is, or takes us to twenty-two?
Takes us to twenty-two, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's two miles.
Two miles.
Okay, yeah.
No.
No, there's a, yeah.
You just feel the map behind your head. It'll take us from, from here up to, to, essentially, where ninety-three ties into seventy-five. I was off here, right, one mile north of, one mile north would be the term I have, twenty-two.
So right to the intersection of ninety-three?
Yeah, yeah, right, where the, the developments-
Andersonville.
Anderson, yeah. That's the same stretch that was Odyssey previously. We're starting to see a lot of, a lot of areas where that is blown out, so by, by two thousand sixteen, it'll be definitely time to remove it and replace it. And that one, you can see, we're, we're utilizing our county road funding on that. That's where that seven hundred thousand dollars is coming in there, so. One thing to note, in order for us to make this plan work, you know, all the way through our, our new county construction allotment, the green money, that has been held at three hundred and fifty thousand in the first three years of the plan. And, and I think, Kevin, wasn't it maybe a few years before where it went from three hundred to three hundred and fifty?
Right.
So we, we built that up a little bit, in order to make the plan work, in order to be able to do this project, and subsequently, the, the next year's project where we're grading the remaining three miles, we propose increasing the new county allot, new county construction allotment from three fifty to four hundred for these last two years, to help, to help fund the grading work that needs to be done out there. And subsequently, the, the eventual paving work that'll need to be done as well. So. Any questions about two thousand sixteen?
Well, I, Mr., the, the comment on the, on the allotment, you know, right now, you know, to make it all work, we would, we, that future board, the future boards, we can't do that today. We can't set the four hundred for, today for what's gonna be in seventeen. But certainly, this kinda sets the stage as how it would be funded. And there's always, there's always opportunities, and maybe there's always some downfalls that can change that up or down. You know, we have some good bids, and you have some bad bids, you have overruns and stuff, but, but right now, based on what we know, you know, we're gonna be talking about something else down the road here that might allow some additional funds available, too, that could maybe, maybe a case for not having to do that as well.
Yeah, okay.
But it's just something that, that's more informational now. We can't be making that decision for future boards as far as, for, yeah.
I, I just wanted to, to show what I was intending to request.
You're, you're exactly right.
To make, one thing, too, that, that we've talked about, the Highway Tracking Committee is, is that we think we could get a better bid if we did all the grading of the five miles at the same time, rather than split in two years. And so if there's some way that we end up with extra, extra funds, more funds than we have here, then we could maybe do that in one shot, rather than two. Not only for the bid, but also for just the, the difficulty in living along it. It's, it's gonna be a lot better if it was all done at one time, so.
Correct.
With our current funding, this is the way it comes out.
So in, in two thousand seventeen, once again, we're, we're looking at a, a bridge replacement with a box culvert on County Road sixty-eight. Majority of that funding, again, is coming from bridge bonding. The, the local match would basically be to remove the old bridge and, and a few other minor grading items. And then, project twenty-six is, is kinda the big one that John and Kevin were alluding to. Be the remaining three miles, it'd be the, the first mile from county eighteen to a mile north, and then the north two miles, starting at Anderson addition, kinda where county-
Twenty-six?
Yep, up to twenty-six. And on that, we're, we're showing about a half million dollars worth of grading on that one as well. And then we've got a bridge replacement in there also on County Road one seventeen. That's the one that's right in town. Frank, that's the bridge that's right in town.
Yeah, great.
The culvert there. We would be replacing that one. We're starting to see some signs of deterioration on that one. Things are, are moving around. We're starting to lose some of the asphalt around it. It's, it's starting to suck through when the water moves through the culvert, so, or when, when the water moves through the bridge. So we'd replace it with a culvert. So, and again, that, that project would be funded mainly with bridge bond funds. And again, there's another, our project twenty-eight would be another full bond payment, the two point two, three, five.
Okay. What are your wishes, gentlemen, regarding approval of the five-year road construction plan?
I would, I would move that we accept the plan as presented.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your plan is carried. The next part, please.
Okay, the next item is a resolution for the I-94 corridor expansion in the Minnesota State Highway Investment Plan. The, the St. Cloud Metropolitan Planning Organization has sent out to a lot of the, the counties up and down the I-94 corridor, requesting support for, for their resolution to request that MinDOT consider expansion of the, the corridor, in the St. Cloud region specifically. I, I think, Kevin, you wanted to talk about this one a little bit, correct?
Yeah, well, and we certainly, through our Highway Tracking Committee, we, we originally supported, supported this, but recent developments, we, and I think I might have gotten that through you, Brian, or, but an email from, came from, or there was a request from the city in COG to maybe consider holding off on this resolution, resolution until we can maybe come up with some joint language that COG, City of Moorhead, and the county can all live together with, and so that we're all on the same message. Because right now, there may be some language in here that COG or Moorhead might be struggling a little bit with. So I, I think it would be worth our while to postpone this for at least a week, and, and hear from COG and Moorhead, and, and if we can come with a unified message, that's even all the better. So I, I don't know if there's any, anything earth-shattering that makes us need to do it today, is there, Nathan?
No, there isn't. I think it, it could be tabled until we get some more information.
Brian, is that kinda what the message was from COG and?
Yeah, yes, yes, they, Chairman, Commissioner Campbell, they, they just, you know, it's two different districts that we're dealing with, with MinDOT, and just wanna examine it, and they'd kinda like the three of us to be on the same page.
So postpone this for another, at least another week?
I, I would move that we tabled this item.
Well, there's really nothing to table, 'cause there's nothing on there. There's no motion to table, so we'll just postpone it.
Okay.
Next is the wheelage tax. Kevin, were you gonna go into that one?
Why?
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, as you guys may be aware, this last legislative session, the legislature approved the ability, I guess, for all eighty-seven counties to impose a wheelage tax. Prior to two thousand thirteen legislative session, only the seven metro counties were able to impose a wheelage tax for highway improvements on, on their roads. At, at that time, the tax was five dollars per, per vehicle. The new legislation allows county to, to increase that up to ten dollars per vehicle. You know, we, we have, there are some restrictions on that. Motorcycles, you can see there're trailers, collector cars, and, and some other things are exempt. We, we did bring this item to the last two Highway Tracking Committee meetings for discussion. There was an extensive discussion about the additional funds and, and what they would be put to use for, and, and how they could help the county, you know, and, and or possibly offset some of the other costs that, that, you know, that we're, we're seeing tax dollars, levy dollars spent on. You know, at the present time, we do get gas tax and license tab fees, you know, that are distributed back to us from the state, but they can only be spent on state aid roads. The wheelage tax funds could be spent on, on any roads within the county, as defined in, in the state's constitution. And I've got a copy of that, if you'd like to take a look at it. Basically, it's, it's any county, state aid highway system, municipal state aid road, or local road.
Is there any timeline, how the money has to be spent? Money is collected in, say, two thousand thirteen, you can-
No, 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 the, the fund could be revolving, or, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, as Nathan said, we, we had extensive discussions on this in the Highway Tracking Committee meeting. And first off is whether, should you or should not, should you not do it? I think, granted, given the report that several counties were, were not doing it in, in the state, but when you look at the dollars that this would generate, and we're talking about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly a year in revenue that would be raised, you know, I'm speaking myself as a commissioner, and you, the rest of you can probably join in, but if there are complaints to county commissioners, the number one complaint that I seem to get seems to be about, it's either roads or water, one of those two issues. And, and obviously, whether I'm driving in the streets as the City of Moorhead, or I'm driving on the county roads or township roads, there's a lot of them that, that just need a lot of work. And our options for revenue, like Nathan said, the, the certain state money that comes in, it's designated for state aid highway systems and so on and so forth, so we can't use those. So you're really boiled down to, your other option is to put it on a levy, which then goes to property tax. And in this particular case, the money that would be raised, four hundred and fifty thousand, that would be equivalent to almost a two percent increase on our levy. When you look at the big picture and how I've talked about how, how we need to make sure that we're cognizant of what's going on on the other side of the river for future development and coming in here, that we need to be reasonable with our, our, what we do with our property tax. This would not go on the property tax. I've never heard of somebody who's trying to decide whether they're gonna build a home or a business in Fargo-Moorhead, say, well, gee, how much am I paying for my car license, as I, as they might be saying how much they're gonna be paying in property tax. So, so that, you know, it, we need work on our roads, desperately need work on our roads, and I think most of the citizens realize that. And this resolution states that it has to go only to, it's to be deposited into the Road and Bridge Fund and used for those purposes only. During the Highway Tracking Committee meeting, I also talked a little bit about having to understand where a lot of these dollars will be coming from, and a lot of these dollars will be coming from residents of Moorhead, residents of Barnesville, residents of Glendon, Dilworth, and so on and so forth, and, and so, and they all have, they all have road issues and needs themselves. And so, you know, it was brought up that maybe we could do a shared system of this, of this increased revenue. In other words, we could set, I think the resolution, that one of the resolutions you had before it is, is thirty percent would be set aside into a fund that would allow cities to apply for funds for projects that they have in their area, provided that they would put a match to it. So, so we're trying to get more things done with the amount of money that we have.
Does Moorhead fall into that?
Moorhead falls into that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. So it's all communities. What would still need to be worked out through the, you know, through the Highway Tracking Committee would be, how, how do you proportionally reserve some of that thirty percent for the different communities to make sure that everybody gets a piece of the pie? I, I think it's kinda how we wanna do that. And that, we just did not have the time in the Highway Tracking Committee meetings to this point to come up with that criteria, but it would be the intent to do that.
But that doesn't have to be done today.
No.
The resolution is today, and that can be worked out in the future.
As far as I'm concerned, the resolution, before I would, before I would, before I would agree to the resolution on the wheelage tax, I'd want assurance that the other resolution that does the split also passes, because I wouldn't be in favor of one without the other.
When that comes to that, why don't we do that one first, then?
Okay. So, but I, I just, you know, a little bit of background there, and, and, you know, and, and, you know, Mr. Chairman, you, you raised the question, well, can you, is there a timeline on when you have to do this? And one of the, one of the options that we do have is we, we can allow these funds, if we so choose, to build, so that you can do a significant project. You know, you wait three or four years, and all of a sudden, you've got a million dollars, and you can, you can do a fairly significant project for the county and for, for these local communities. But this is, I know it's probably gonna upset some people, but if we're gonna, if they want us to fix these roads, we can fix it with play money, and so we've gotta, we've gotta come up with a source of revenue to do it. And, and this seems to be one that will keep us competitive with the other side of the river and allow future work to get done.
John?
Yeah, I would like, just like to comment, too, on it. I mean, I think it's, this is an opportunity for us to, to raise money that can be used on local roads that we haven't, haven't had in the past. And it's, it's, it's just vitally important that we keep our roads up. If our infrastructure continues to fail, we don't, we can't get crops to market, we can't get supplies in and out of the county, and the roads are, in many cases, in pretty tough shape right now. So we need to do what we can to get them up. I think this is a good idea. I'm, I, I'm concerned about the, the rural roads, but I'm convinced that we also need to, we need to make a, a share of this, a part of this go into the cities as well. And with this kind of a, an approach where we allow them to apply for matching funds to their own, I think that's a good, uh-
I also support it. Any other comments, gentlemen?
Well, I reluctantly support it. Yesterday at that meeting, I didn't, of the nine counties that were there, I, none had decided to approve this wheelage tax, and Otter Tail had already decided against it. And, you know, like I said before, I think it's, I don't, you know, the reason I'll support it is I don't think we have any options, but, you know, I think it's, again, a failure at the state level to do their job, and, you know, I, I see that's basically what it says in our resolution, so, and because of that, I'll, I'll support it.
Kevin, you wanna make that motion, the first one?
Well, you know, I, I, yeah, I, the-
We don't have a resolution for the second.
We, we do, yep.
We do?
We do, yep. It's in the back, in, in the last page.
Gotcha.
It's pretty hard to make a resolution after raising a share of the wheelage tax when we don't have a resolution on the wheelage tax.
Why don't you do that, roll the dice first?
But there'd be, certainly-
Bring the combined.
Well, how about this, I, I would, I would move that we, are you gonna put a number to this, Vicki? This, do you have a number that would, on this, we, on the cost-sharing one, would you have a number, say?
Yeah.
Two thousand thirteen, it says, two thousand thirteen dash?
The, the shared one, or the-
The shared one, the shared one.
Forty-three.
Forty-three. I would move resolution two thousand thirteen forty-three, subject to resolution two, two thousand thirteen forty-two.
Being approved. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. We just needed the one motion, correct?
No.
No, we don't have another one.
Kevin?
I would move, I would move that, that resolution.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
And again, I, I just want to point out that this, this allows us to do some work and it's, it's been the intent of the Highway Tracking Committee that these funds will be used to better improve our road systems within the county. And it's desperately needed and we can't depend on the state to do it. It's a better option than, than property tax, so.
Before we vote, before we vote on this, I just have one comment. I understand there are two ways to collect this money, to do it locally or to go to the state. It's my understanding, recommendation out of committee and our administrator, is the money to go to the state and then come back to us.
That's correct.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, Nate.
Thanks, guys.
Nate, you did a good job.
Brian?
Thanks.
Where's your boss today? Is he skipping?
He's in Kenora right now in Canada, issue. Everybody deserves a vacation.
All right.
Brian, switch to the top.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to comment on, Nathan was out at the county fair for government night last Thursday night. They had a very nice display out there, plus they also brought in some of their heavy equipment for display, which went over really well. So thank you for the extra effort on that.
Yeah. One other thing that, that I didn't realize when I was out at the fair, one of our former employees, Joe Gerner, was out there as well, and he's now working for the Helping Hands Program, the Farm Relief Program. So it was good to see him putting his, his talents to use for, for their organization. I was pretty proud seeing him step up and volunteer for that. Just an update on, on one of our former employees.
Thank you, Nate.
Yep. Thanks, guys.
Ms. Porter?
Hey.
We are just about on time.
Okay.
Rhonda Porter, Mary Lumen Olsen, Lumen Olsen, and Susan Roel or Rau, how do you say your last name?
Roel.
Roel, okay. Oh, okay. And you're going to talk to us about Minnesota sharing county staffing.
Yes. We are here for the long awaited discussion about MinSure, which is, of course, the impetus for our conversation today is a result of some pretty significant legislation, which you've been hearing about since 2010, the Affordable Care Act, often called Obamacare, and the new legislation passed in Minnesota called the Minnesota's Health Insurance Marketplace Act. And that legislation passed this year is where this online marketplace called MinSure has been established in Minnesota as a result of the Affordable Care Act. And that online marketplace will be taking, starting with open enrollment in October, October 1st of this year. And so all of this legislation is, of course, the impetus for our conversation with you today. So I'm going to start by just talking a little bit about, I'm going to have Mary talk a little bit about the legislative changes and the individuals that will now be eligible for Medicaid. So that's the public health, or the public health care programs in Minnesota. And that's really what we're talking about, because those are the folks that will impact the work that we do here at the local level. Let's talk a little bit about those changes and then a little bit about how those, those new applicants or those transfers will come into the county and the work that that will mean for our staff here. So, Mary, do you want to start with?
Well, okay. Rhonda put this out really, really quite well, because I don't know too much about this yet. This is still coming down, we're still learning about it. But Minnesota Care, the next generation, will increase coverage to an additional, she's got 127,000 people, Minnesotans there. We don't do Minnesota Care in Clay County, we refer those to DHS. The applications that come in, first we determine if they're eligible for healthcare MA, and then if they're not, we refer them on to Minnesota Care. Some come in just requesting Minnesota Care and those automatically go just straight to Minnesota Care. So we first look at eligibility for MA, and then if they're not, we will pass them on. Sometimes family members, some family members are eligible for MA and some are not. So we'll have some of those family members in the county, we're servicing them under MA, and some are serviced at DHS under Minnesota Care. So that's the expansion for Minnesota Care. The expansion of medical assistance for adults without children, they increased the level to 138% of the FPG, is funded by medical assistance. That used to be our General Assistance Medical Care Program. Those of you who've been here, remember that one. These for adults without children. We're going to see, that has already started increasing our caseload on that. The simplified MA eligibility process, streamlining, automated annual reviews, I haven't, I don't know much about this yet. It's still being part of training that we're starting in August. I'll learn more about that. We have a lot of unknowns, exactly how we're going to determine eligibility. We're going to be using different eligibility criteria for our families and different review cycles that we won't have to do quite so many, I guess. I don't know a lot of this. It's a new system that we will need to learn, new program rules that we'll need to learn. The expanded MA for children to the 275% FPG, that, that is the one that raises the income limits for children ages 2 through 18, to, from 150 to 275 FPG. And pregnant women with incomes up to 275. So they'll be seeing them on MA instead of Minnesota Care, so we'll get those back. So this is going to increase our workload. We think throughout Minnesota, 10,000 Minnesota children will be eligible. Based on the, the legislation, the, the state has made a determination that we're going to see about 1,707 citizens in Clay County be eligible for medical. That does not include the applications that we're going to get that will have to determine eligibility that will be ineligible. So we're going to see an increase in our intake beyond that one, you know, beyond what we're doing. Right now, we probably see about 50 to 50 healthcare applications. If you add everything, it's about 75 to 80, 90 applications on a weekly basis. So we're busy. We're behind.
So if you want to, maybe we could just talk a little bit about attachment aid, because that gives a little more data to what Mary is talking about. And maybe I could just go through with you that attachment. It, it lists the, all of the 87 counties, and so you'll see, if you find Clay County, that first number there, 366, what that is saying is that these are new families or children that will be eligible for Medicaid as a result of the eligibility changes for Clay County. Then the 122 is the new Medicaid eligible adults without children. Okay? So that total is 488 new individuals that'll be eligible for Medicaid as a result of eligibility changes.
Good. All these children stuff, aren't they covered under the family policy up to 26 yet? Or are we saying, probably I'm not understanding this whole thing.
Okay, that's insurance, yes.
Okay.
Okay? But there's a number of people that don't have insurance. Most of our healthcare families don't have insurance.
So these would be low-income families.
Families that are getting Medicaid.
That are eligible for the...
Medical assistance.
The third category there, the MCRE, is Minnesota Care. So these are the families and children that are going to be transferred from Minnesota Care to Clay County, so 1,023. And the next line, the 195, is the Minnesota Care adults without children that'll be transferred to the county for management.
Can you explain a little bit more of what you mean by transferring?
Well, they're currently on Minnesota Care, so they're, they're going to be taken off of Minnesota Care, because now they're going to be eligible for MA, medical assistance. So they're coming back to the county.
So we do the administration rather than the state?
Great. So we'll have to process those. And, and exactly how that transfer is going to occur, I don't know if it's going to be automatic or we will have to actually input all that information into that new system.
So, so just so I can understand the process a little bit, I understand the first time somebody comes in, there, there can be a considerable amount of work done, because you're, you're building your file on them, you're putting all of these. Once that's implemented, then I, I'm assuming there's some checks and balances down the road that makes sure they still qualify?
Yeah, we have to do reviews. Right now, we're doing them every six months.
Right, okay.
Now, I understand that some...
Go ahead.
Some of the legislation is going to change that, so we won't have to do them quite so often. But there's always changes in households. If they report a change, we have to look at that change and see if they're still eligible for the program, or do they now need to spend, have to need to spend down, which works like an insurance deductible, because their income's above the standard. And I've, I don't really know all the ins and outs of the program yet, because haven't had that information. A lot of things haven't been determined by DHS yet. We're still waiting.
I guess I'm just, I'm just trying to, I understand when something like this gets rolled over, and even in this case where it's rolled over from, from the state to the county.
Yeah.
There's, there's still, there's still this work that's already been done. It seems to me that this can go from this computer to this computer.
I don't know if that's going to happen. That, before in conversions, we had, yeah, we thought it would be automatic. No, we had to input everything into these systems. I don't know.
Well, so that's an unanswered question.
Yeah, it's, I don't know what's going to happen there. If it's going to be automatic, then we just have to maintain them? Or are we going to have to get additional information and actually enter it to a new system? I don't know that.
And all these are trying, are, all these are questions in regards to, your pages about staff meeting, right?
Yes. One thing I do know that's going to happen, when we get these applications back in the county, they're going to also request other programs. So we're going to have additional applications like for food support or maybe cash assistance. That's what normally happens when things come, when they come back to the county, if there was three in the county, they'll say, well, let's see if I'm eligible for food support, or can I get some cash? So we'll have to take an application and make those determinations. And that would require a new application, because it's a different program. So I, I see that increasing our other programs.
So those, all of those things, these additional things that they would be requesting now, were they getting them someplace before?
Probably not. A lot of clients that, once they're in Minnesota Care, if they're not coming to the county, sometimes they don't bother to come in and request. But once they have to come in, then they'll always check all the other programs.
And they may not be eligible for all those programs, but...
But we have to re-determine.
Because, because they ask to be assessed for eligibility, it creates that, that extra workload. So although the, if you tally the Minnesota Care cases that are transferring, that's the 1,0218, again, these are folks that were currently not serving that, I mean, they're being served by state staff, so they will now come to the county needing county staff.
And that's annually, is that an annual anticipation?
Right now, well, this, no, this would be the total transfer, so it wouldn't be this number every year. Is that what you're asking?
Well, once, yeah, once you play, but that...
They're going to do it in stages. Number four will show that they're doing plan five. That's just for Minnesota Care. But during this time, we'll still be taking new applications on people trying to find out if they can get health insurance, or trying to see if they're on, can get on medical assistance, so they don't have to pay for health insurance for 2014. So we'll be, we'll be receiving, seeing our intake increase, because we're going to get more applications.
Brian?
Just going back a little bit, you said this, you used to do a six-month review, now we're not going to do a six-month review?
My understanding that they're, they're going to stop doing those six-month reviews, might even stretch it out to two years instead of yearly. I'm not 100% sure yet. I'll learn that probably in August.
Have you reviewed these people's cases for...
No. But the thing is, is if they're on another program, if they're on food support or cash, those will still have six-month reviews, yearly, you know, income reviews and yearly annual reviews, where we, eligibility reviews, where we look at everything. So those programs will still be dealing with those cases on a ongoing basis. And if they report a change, we have to look at that change and see if that change affects their eligibility.
I think down the road with the, this system, the online market system, as well as some of the new technology, the infrastructure for Medicaid, we eventually will see some efficiencies, we hope, not only just in the, the system that we use, but also some of the changes in requirements that the staff go through for redetermining that eligibility. Some of that, I think the overall goal and conversation with DHS is that we'll start to see some of those efficiencies. Initially not, because we're going to be double entering into two systems. We'll be entering into MAXIS and a system called KIRAM. So we're going to see appear, and then hopefully we'll see some leveling off.
Kevin?
So, and this, this is quite complicated, and excuse me for having a lot of questions, but...
That's all right. I do too.
The 1218, these are new ones coming into us, right? But, but they've been processed prior by...
For Minnesota Care, which has different eligibility rules.
Right. Now, now this whole process in this MinSure, this MinSure is kind of the overall hub of all, of the pool of all sorts of different options. Is that correct?
Correct.
Am I stating that correctly? There's, so there's, there can be multiple insurance purchase, purchase, different plans available to purchase through MinSure, isn't there?
It, it's like a, okay, yes, uh-huh. Okay, the, all the applications are going to go, this is my understanding, they're going to go to one place, the DHS is a big hub, and then they will look at it and determine if they, we need to look at medical assistance, it's going to ship to the county. Okay? The county will then determine medical assistance if they're ineligible, then it's shipped to where they can purchase insurance, whether they use their tax refunds, their credits coming from 2015 to purchase their 2014 insurance, whatever. That has, I don't know how that's going to work yet, but that's the idea behind it.
So is that, is that part, part of the work that's done that the staff helps them do then? Is that...
Well, right now, my understanding is, in the county, we're going to determine MA eligibility only, based on the new criteria that we'll be getting. And for our disabled, we're still using the old criteria, so we have two different eligibility criterias that we'll be looking at, depending upon where that person fits.
So if it's, if, if they qualify, qualify for MA, that, that ends it?
Can we maintain it?
If they don't qualify for MA, then they end up back looking in this pool?
Well, first we look at Minnesota, they would go to Minnesota Care and see if they get Minnesota Care. If they can't, they're ineligible for that, then they're going to look at them purchasing their health insurance through this hub.
Through the, okay, okay. I'm really trying to understand.
That's confusing.
Yeah. Okay.
And the state had estimated that about 450,000 individual consumers will access MinSure, about 155,000 small businesses and employees of small businesses, and then 690,000 Medicaid enrollees will, going to be accessing this MinSure system. You had asked a question about, would the county's role be to help applicants maneuver through this system? One of the pieces to it, there will be a call center that folks can utilize to help.
Statewide.
Yes, statewide. But the state has issued requests for proposals, and they are encouraging counties to apply, as well as other entities and communities, churches, the cap agencies, to be what's called in-person assisters that would help individuals maneuver through this system, either over the phone or in person. And there are a set amount of dollars then that these in-person assistors can bill, $70 per individual who becomes successfully enrolled through the MinSure system. Now, we, we haven't submitted an application to do that. I've been talking to Joe Peterson at Lakes and Prairies, and I think Lakes and Prairies as a cap agency fits within their role, and I believe that he was going to submit an application to do that. There's a lot of concerns around it with the, the reimbursement not really covering the costs that it would take to have these folks go through the training, be certified, and, but...
And what the numbers you have here are today's numbers, they're not tomorrow's numbers.
These are numbers that came out through DHS and we are informed, this is what we should plan for.
These are going to be different tomorrow, day after, I mean, they're going to, these aren't going to be down.
As we talk, yeah.
These aren't going down, correct?
No.
Thank you.
And maybe I could just highlight then the last number on the right, what that is, is the 562, is, this is DHS's estimate of our currently, our current caseload of healthcare applicants, that we will probably need to touch close to, you know, 562 of those and reassess based on new, the new eligibility. So we're going to have, work with new cases as well as our... new cases as well as our existing caseload. So that's-
And these numbers do not reflect the, the new applications that we're gonna be denying. These are just potential eligibility. I see the, the number of people that we're gonna come in through our door is gonna be much higher than this.
Kevin? Well, this MinSure, in it, it's, it's, it's meant for a lot more too than, than just those who cannot afford.
It's for everyone, correct.
Um, for example, if I understand the rules correctly, any business entity with less than 50 employees, uh, they don't even have to carry a, a group health plan for them, and then, but these people would have the option to go through MinSure and to find the, the best deal for them to buy-
Insurance.
-product on their own, correct?
Mm-hmm, correct.
You know, so, so the, my point being is, we're focusing on, on the ones who, right, and rightfully so, that, that don't have the coverage at all. But how are those, in these small business settings, these employees, what, what assistance are they getting to help them on, understand this whole new beast that's out there to, how, what's, what's going on for them?
Well, that's part of the sister.
The, yeah.
Part of the, the, the phone line.
The call center.
Us, you know, us, when they, if they happen to call, we would, you know, refer them on, help them, try to help them through that. Um, but basically, yeah, it's, it's, and I see people just making a healthcare application just to get started.
Right. And they do that, they do-
They can do that here, they can do it online, they can do it-
At the state level, they do it online, right?
Mail, they can do it any way they want.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the call center is available to businesses, you know, private. And the in-person assistors, my understanding is that is for anyone as well. It is not just for individuals that would likely qualify for the public Medicaid programs, so. So those are our numbers. Those are the numbers we've been operating off of. And as Mary said, looking at that 1,700, we feel is a, is a low estimate of what our activity level really will be, at least initially into the first year of this unfolding. But it is the numbers given to us from DHS. Uh, the next page talks a little bit about the implementation timeline. And so, basically, what we did there is we took those 1,700 new folks and carried that percentage all the way through to get an estimate of how many we might be seeing, starting in January, July, and so forth. Okay? And, and this, we're not consider, we're just considering those 1,700. We're not considering the cases that are gonna require adjustment, and those kinds of things. Um, so just doing a little bit of comparison, looking at our, in Roman numer five there, um, based on our February 2013 numbers, we had 8,614 persons enrolled in Medicaid. And adding those 1,700, we'll be at, uh, over 10,000, representing 19.82% growth just in that Medicaid program.
And we're currently at 8,773 at the end of June.
Does everybody who, who is on Medicaid have to go through the county?
If they live in Clay County.
Mm-hmm, okay, so they do.
And the, the February numbers we got from DHS, um, they looked at, in snapshot in February, they looked at, you know, how many people we have on Medicaid, and then how many people we had on Minnesota Care. And it represented 16, little over 16% of our population.
But think of Clay County, and think how many people out in Clay County don't have health insurance. Quite a few. And those are the ones that are, they're gonna have to be looking for health insurance for January 1, 2014.
Um, okay, so, funding. And I did provide to you in your packets, uh, information that came out of DHS relative to the funding and how that's going to change. You've often heard us talk about many of the staff and expenses in our income maintenance unit being eligible for that 50% federal financial participation. One of the things that's gonna change is that relative to healthcare and the administration of healthcare, that, um, match or that participation will change to 75%, which of course is a good thing, as we try to, um, have to beef up staff in order to, uh, assist citizens in getting on Medicaid. So they'll be looking at a 25% county, uh, split 75% federal financial participation. Um, and the, one of the things that we had initially heard was that, um, there, that 75% match was gonna expire. But now, um, they indicate that that match will stay as long as the state's eligibility system is operating successfully. So what does that mean? What I take that to mean is long as our online marketplace is compliant with the Affordable Care Act, and that that 75% match would continue. Um, the other positive piece to this is that, um, what's been clear is that currently, the Medicaid cases that we are managing, that 50% will go to 75% as well. So that will be, um, an additional, additional revenue to what we're currently doing, even if we didn't add-
That's 1,140.
Yes, yes, yeah. So that, that was good news as well. Um, so, in looking at our numbers, and looking at, kinda, talking with DHS, looking at what other counties are doing, I also did attach AMC survey is not complete, and I know there's been changes. Counties are in the fury of gearing up for this. But for your information, just to get a sense of what other counties were looking at, what their new enrollment was, if they're looking at, uh, resource expansion at their human service agencies, what they're looking at, and where the board activity was. Just as a reference to get a sense. And as I look at this, I feel that our request and how we're looking at this is consistent with what's happening around the state. So we've, we've thought about a few ideas. We feel that based on the number, and again, we were just using that 1,700, that fi, an additional five FTE employees would be needed to, um, to get through the implementation, the dual entry, um, the, the initial phases of this. Um, and we looked at simply adding staff or incorporating a proposal that actually has been in conversation probably for about a year and a half, which is, uh, looking at one of our programs that we administer, which is the childcare program. There's three programs within that, contracting that with Lakes and Prairies. Currently, this conversation again started about a year and a half ago, as we were talking about, uh, human service redesign and regional efforts. Uh, Lakes and Prairies came and met with our region board directors and talked about, um, administering those childcare programs on behalf of our regions' counties. So far, Ottertail, Pope, Wadena have contracted and are currently contracting with Lakes and Prairies to administer their programs. Becker County, my understanding, last Tuesday, um, have approved for Becker County to do that as well, as a part of dealing with the Medicaid expansion. And so we've included that as a part of our plan as well. Of course, Clay County, we're the biggest, uh, county in our group, and, um, represent the largest numbers to that arrangement. But there are a lot of, um, pros to entering into that kind of an arrangement. The staff, uh, we've probably, I didn't bring that, but how many programs our income maintenance staff, um, are responsible to sift out, and it's a number, 20-some programs, when we think of Medicaid, MFIP, DWP, food support, MSA, emergency assistance.
G-R-H-G.
Um, it's incredibly overloaded. And they do a great job, but the volume is crazy and the, the information that you have to know in terms of all of those programs. So we think there's a lot of benefits to carving out this particular program and contracting with Lakes and Prairies.
And we are struggling.
Lakes and Prairies, uh, does have the ability and staff to do this.
Yeah, they would gear up, and, um, as more counties come on board, we, we'd hopefully like to see this as a whole regional effort. But they will have to gear up for staffing. So that, if, if we approved this as a part of our plan, the start date for that, we'd have to work with Lakes and Prairies, because I know Becker County just approved as well. So, um, again, Lakes and Prairies has res, um, Clay County Resource and Referral, so they already are working with our licensed providers in our community. So this is taking the childcare assistance applicants. So this is families, um, that are low-income that get assistance to pay for their childcare. So it's a really nice link between the applicants of childcare and our licensed providers. Okay? Um, so we could, we could go through in, in looking at the first grid at the bottom there outlines, um, the cost for, uh, if we looked at adding the five staff that, that we felt necessary, we looked at four financial workers and one office support specialist, the cost of that, this would be step one, new employees, and what that 75% federal financial participation would be in terms of revenue. And then the enhanced revenue from our current caseload, which is the 50% to the 75%, and then what the total cost and the total expenditures would be. Now, as we went through this, and it ended up to be, um, that we actually would have a gain in some revenue, I, is this right? And Susan and I looked at our numbers and went back-
That's because of the 50.
It is because of that, correct, yes. Now, some things that aren't necessarily considered in here is, and I have that over on the additional considerations, is that, of course, with five staff, we will have to, there's some equipment needs, and that's gonna be the scenario in, in each case. But, um, the second, uh, idea there is looking at, right now, three staff, which would be two financial workers, one office support specialist, uh, the contract with Lakes and Prairies, again, adding in the revenue. And then, the, the new part to this would be, um, we've estimated about two FTE employees are currently involved in administering the childcare programs. And so if, and, and they do not receive the 50% federal financial participation on that activity. So we, we anticipate seeing some increased revenue as a result of moving that program off of their plates and allowing them more time to work in healthcare.
Rhonda, the dollar amount that you have there for, um, what would be the contract with Lakes and Prairies?
Yes.
137. I see there's no, would, would Lakes and Prairies receive the revenue for that then?
So this is a, a little complicated. We, um, we receive dollars for administering the childcare programs right now. We receive about, um, 80, 80,000, I'd say, about 80,000. 70, 73,700. So that revenue would continue, and it would continue to come into our budget, because it's earned based on how many dollars go out the door for childcare assistance. It'll still come into our budget, and we will, in a sense, use that to pay Lakes and Prairies. But in doing that, it still creates that $73,000 hole in revenue in our budget. So it ends up, the net impact ends up being the same.
I see.
If that makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you were planning, you use that revenue for something else.
Yeah, you know, it would be nice if, if we were gonna contract out, send them the money, but yet, then we could reduce staff.
By contracting, we're losing that 75%.
Well, we don't get 75% in administering the childcare program. That's separate.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So we're not losing it that way, no.
But if we, if we kept, and this other option, we're keeping everything for the sets, right? We're doing everything in-house, sir.
Yeah, and the other option, we're keeping the childcare programs. We don't get 75% on that administration, but, yeah.
Are we quite sure that Lakes and Prairies can, can do it for that contracted price? Is that, the, where's their efficiency come? Just in numbers and, and working?
Right. And I think as they build their numbers, they will gain efficiencies and economies of scale as well. One of the things that is, of course, a, a benefit to us here in Clay County is that Lakes and Prairies is right here and right here in our building. Whereas with Ottertail, Wadena, Pope, and even Becker, they're going to be doing some, um, reaching out in those communities. But it's really great that they're right in our building. So us, some of our applicants that come to our door, we can just send them down the hallway, which is really, um, a nice piece to have.
But, under these two scenarios, scenario, the first scenario where you're asking for the four, or would suggest the four financial workers, then all the, um, whoops, excuse me, that all the childcare stuff would, would still stay in its Kermit format, we'd still be doing it the way that we're doing it, right? That would, so nothing would change. Um, you know, so, to me, it looks, it looks to me like there's, there's a difference of 80-some thousand dollars by, uh, the two proposals there. And I, I would question why, why we wanna, why would you wanna do that?
Well, when we looked at this, we went through that same process of thinking, you know, well, is this a no-brainer? Why would you wanna do that? Um, I mean, I think there are a couple of things we haven't considered in this. First, I will say that, um, I do think that the contract with Lakes and Prairies, I think we're gonna realize some budget savings that maybe isn't really reflected here. Because one of the things is, um, right now, our auditor staff also spend about .5 FTE time managing our providers, all of our, um, childcare assistance providers, and processing all of the vouchers for childcare assistance. So they process about, I think we figured, 600 and some vouchers a month on average, Susan? I just took those three months of average, yeah. And we have, um, 193 licensed childcare providers and 42 legally non-licensed childcare providers that we manage. Now, these would all go to Lakes and Prairies to deal with, as well as all of the processing of the payments. We think with healthcare, the, the impacts of healthcare is not gonna be contained to our income maintenance unit. We're going to feel it in our social service area, we are gonna feel it in our child support area, and we're gonna feel it in our, the auditor side as well. Because of more folks on Medicaid means more MA access, means more payments, means, you know? And so, in, in looking at this contract with Lakes and Prairies, we feel that it is gonna allow us some additional staff time in other areas to deal with the impacts of healthcare. So therefore, not having to add staff there here. So, I mean, it, it was hard to kinda put all that down and figure out how that will all wash out. But I think, too, I, I think it's pretty clear, we're gonna see the impacts across the board.
John?
Uh, are we then moving, if we did this contract, then we're moving some of our childcare people into the financial worker? Is that what you're saying? I mean, why? I guess I'm still not understanding why we only need two financial workers under this scenario. You got the same caseload either way on, on that.
Oh, we wouldn't have that program to deal with. The childcare program, we wouldn't have.
So we'd be moving about 328 families off of the caseload to Lakes and Prairies.
But some of those families are on medical assistance, some are on food support. So we're still dealing with some of those families, a lot of those families. I, I, I'm torn. I don't, you know, it's, if you ask, some of the workers would feel getting rid of that program is worth it. You know, just getting two workers, getting rid of the program. Some would say, give me, get us four workers, you know? It's, I'm torn. But, you know, it's one less program that workers would have to learn, one less system. It's another system they have to learn, because it's separate from MAXIS. Um, so that would be a benefit.
I think the other piece is that, um, you know, space. And the other piece that is on my mind as well is as this unfolds, and three to five years down the road, when we see how all this is institutionalized, will we have- how all this is institutionalized, will we have efficiencies that will not, we won't necessarily need all these staff? So with a contract to Lakes and Prairies, we're starting out, you know, bringing on full-time permanent staff at a smaller scale at this point, and that will, so.
Are we looking at adding this staff right away? Because the seventeen hundred, according to this, they're not all going to be on here till January sixteen.
Open enrollment starts October first, and training's August and September, so we'd have to get that staff on to get them trained.
There is enhanced funding for training, but only for healthcare.
But we wouldn't have the caseload till?
But we'll have new applications. This is just your Minnesota care cases coming back to the county, but your new applications will be coming in, they could be, they'll be starting any time. But we'll have to start looking October one under that new system and determining eligibility for those people.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to get our HR person up here. I've got a couple of questions for Darren, if he could join us at this.
You can answer these. You gotta call me up first. That's okay.
That's quite right, but that's why you get paid the big money.
In the scenario here, and part of what troubles me, and I think Frank is alluding to it a little bit, and you mentioned yourself, Mary, there's so many unanswered questions here, there's so many unknowns that we're dealing with here. And I don't want to overburden the staff with all these new things coming in either. But to make a permanent commitment to this, until we know how it shakes out, do we have the ability to bring these people in for a specified time period while this new enrollment process is going through, to determine ultimately how many of them might continue to be needed, and then maybe some of them may not be able to be needed? We've heard, how many times today have we heard, there's so many unknowns here, we don't know? So I would find it disappointing to hire five new people, to tell them nine months down the road, a year down the road, that, you know what, we just don't quite, we didn't quite need what we thought, we have to let you go.
No, I see what you're saying, but right now, we're struggling, and we've been behind. And I think, I don't think, I don't think we're not going to need them. We're going to see an increase in our cases, we're going to see an increase in people. As the economy, the way it is, we've been just gradually, we've been going up and up and up. I don't see that stopping. I'm going to have retirements, I know I'm having one next year, and maybe another one at the end of the year or the beginning of the following year.
But those can be replaced.
Well, yes, but the problem is, is training and getting people, because I've had eight experienced staff gone since 2010, we've been struggling since 2010 trying to keep up.
And these numbers are not going to go down.
No, I don't see them going down.
Well, we haven't, we haven't been full-staffed in that unit for well over two.
But the numbers may not go down, but after the initial, the additional work that goes into it, the amount of work to maintain them after that isn't as much as the original work that goes into it.
But I think what the state is telling us about all these new changes and how it's going to be easy, I think it's kind of deceiving, because we just got notification now, because the feds want us to make sure that we're doing things that are not overriding eligibility, and we have to do additional steps on case noting why we fiat it, something that overrides the automated system, which we have to do a lot. So this is going to add additional work to our workers to do it properly. We haven't been able to do it properly for a while, because we've been so short-staffed. I, you know, thirty-four years I've been in this unit, and nothing ever turns out the way the state's going to be. We were supposed to be paperless with MAXIS, that didn't happen. You know, I don't see this being that so efficient that we're going to lose staff. I just don't see that happening.
Well, I'm not talking about losing staff. I'm talking about the amount of staff that you're adding.
Even with the four, I see we're going to need them.
What are your questions for Darren? I guess my opinion would be that if you add them now, so that they then get, I don't know if you can say caught up, before all of this kicks in, and then through probably normal attrition, having, if we find out that we don't need all of these five in this position, then through attrition of other positions in the financial world or in the Social Services Department, we can start filling some holes and, you know, take those, if we don't need five, then we, and we only need three, then we, through attrition, we find another job for them, so we do. I mean, that's a possibility, but that would only be if the workload, you know, wasn't what we expected, which doesn't sound to be the case with them.
No, we just don't know.
John?
If we went ahead and contracted for the childcare portion, I suppose it's very hard then to come back if we decide that didn't work, a year from now, to come back and start over, or take it back again. How does, how do you see that? Is that, if we make that decision, is that more a permanent thing than added extra employees?
Well, not necessarily. It would be a contract with them, and there'd be terms of termination of the contract. I do think even separate from healthcare, this is something that's been on our radar, and I probably would have prepared a presentation to you to look at that, regardless of healthcare, because I think there's so many pieces of it that makes sense that we do that in the long run. So, yeah, it could be a little more complicated, but it, again, it's a contract, and it wouldn't be insurmountable to take it back at some point, that if that made sense.
What's your recommendation to this board as our director?
Well, I feel.
Well, what is your recommendation?
My recommendation would be that we look at the option with the contract with Lakes and Prairies.
Thank you. Gentlemen, what do you think?
And you feel that, I mean, that, like Kevin pointed out, that's eighty thousand dollars difference, that you feel that that could shake out, so that would be less than that?
I feel it would be less than that. I think we were really, we were pretty conservative, and Susan would agree with all of our analysis that we were conservative on the revenues that we will see. I also think that we will see added benefits to that contract that wasn't necessarily able to articulate down on paper. When I first looked at this as well, I went through quite a bit of processing in my own mind what might make sense, and, you know, you can look at it either way, and as Mary said, she probably would have a unit divided about what would make, what they would feel would be the best option. I do think that marrying the childcare assistance program with what Lakes and Prairies Resource and Referral is already doing does make a lot of sense from our client standpoint, from an administration standpoint. So I am leaning to that.
Thank you. John?
I'd like to ask Mary then, these two financial worker additions, if we lose, if we do the contract, is that going to help you to get caught up as well?
It will help us, you know, we won't get caught up by January one, because they'll have to go through training, they won't be trained in time to really be productive for, you know, getting us caught up with other programming. But it would help us with getting them trained and being able to take on the healthcare, and probably work on those applications, where other workers can work on the backlog.
Gentlemen?
The, under this contract, so you're saying too that all the administrative work for our daycare providers would also shift to Prairie? Have they had any input into this?
Well, these would not be.
The licensing of daycare providers?
No, that doesn't change. No, that still stays with us. This would be licensed providers that take a childcare assistance recipient.
I see, okay.
You've been discussing this with Lakes and Prairies for some time.
We have, and part of the reason for myself not bringing it earlier, a year ago, was that even at that time, the numbers just quite, weren't quite working out for me, and I didn't feel I could come to you and say, well, we could reduce a staff person and do this contract, because we were so overloaded with our workload.
Frank?
Where does Lakes and Prairies get their funding from? Are we going to have to get more funding to them, or where do they get their funding from?
Well, Lakes and Prairies is a community action agency, and they get their funding from a variety of resources as well, but they receive federal funds as well as state funds, and they administer a variety of.
I mean, they'd have to add staff if we're going to go with them.
Correct, correct.
I don't know, I'm not, not, I don't kind of, with the budget enough here, that do we contribute to Lakes and Prairies then? Do they probably come back and say, we need some more money?
We don't, we don't give any, other than for the senior program, we don't give any direct money to Lakes and Prairies. We rent them space, and we.
Well, we do have a contract with them for supervised visitations, as well as we do contract with them for our financial literacy program, so some of the families coming in to apply for emergency assistance, we will refer to them for financial literacy. But that is paid for through state and federal funds.
That's different from your donation to the.
It is.
It's a contract, we're not giving any direct corporations to them.
No, we don't, no, we don't, correct. It's for services.
Kevin?
The, the work that would be turned over to Lakes and Prairies under your proposal, what is the, what is the process of our citizens who would use that if they are dissatisfied with that service?
It'd be the same as if they're dissatisfied with our service. They have their right to appeal, and have a hearing with DHS, and then they, the judge would make a determination that they follow the rules or not.
What are your wishes, gentlemen? I think Rhonda's looking for a motion of support for the option regarding Lakes and Prairies. Is that correct?
I personally like the idea of the contract. I mean, I think, I wish the numbers showed a little closer here, but, I mean, I think there's a chance for efficiency, the more counties they connect with, the better I think that that system could work.
One thing I'd like to mention with Lake, one agency doing the BASF, Basic Sliding Fee Childcare, see, each county gets an allotment, and you have to stay within your allotment, and some counties have extra money, and some counties have waiting lists. If they get where they're running, a number of counties, I think they could do a better job of making sure that all that BASF money is used for that need, that childcare. I'm sure if they, if they approached the state, that they could get, you know, we're just doing all the counties, as long as all the counties agree, and I don't see why we wouldn't, because you'd want the money to be used instead of sent back. So it'd be a better management allocation.
I would move that we go along with our director's recommendation to go into the, it'd be the second scenario that's shown here then.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Discussion?
Well, I'm, I'm going to oppose it. I don't understand how we can justify, at this point, you know, an additional eighty thousand dollars in cost when this original one would work as well, so I haven't seen enough differences as to.
Further discussion?
Vicki, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, I haven't commented on this, but we did spend about an hour and a half one day on this, and I know Rhonda was torn about that, and she didn't have a recommendation, and I'll tell you what, this budget's not going to look good, and this is an eighty thousand dollar swing, so I just want you to consider that before you make a permanent decision on this, so, something to figure. We've got to pay for this somehow.
I vote yes.
No.
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 Yes, motion fails. Do we have another motion?
Well, I mean, we only have one option left.
Well, we've got to go through the process.
Yeah, but, and again, I, I'm a little leery of bringing on five new people here when there's so many things unanswered, but Darren, I think you gave a really good option, provided what may come, and Mary, I don't, I just don't know the answers as to what work might go, but I would, I would move that we move forward with the first scenario presented, with the four financial workers enough, and this is all due to the change in the Healthcare Reform Act, with the understanding that the revenues would still be sufficient enough to really cover the cost of those new hires.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Vicki, would you call the roll, please?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I know there's going to, you're going to have a lot of hard work on this. You know, and I think, you know, in this whole deal, we're going to be pulling our hair out as counties, and businesses are too, I just want you to know that, they're trying to understand this whole thing.
We're in recess, and we're right on schedule.
Okay, we'll call a meeting back to order at this time, and our administrator, Brian Burke, and county treasurer, Lori Johnson, will spend a few minutes discussing the budget planning update.
I'm going to get Lori on the hot seat here, too.
That's why I said, "Here."
Always nice to have the first lady on the table.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman and other commissioners. We would have liked to have brought your packet along with you today, that, you know, it's seventy-some page printout, but we just feel that we need to do some analysis before we get to that, when the agencies have supplied us with their budgets, and Lori has compiled them, and there, we just, you'll see there's some questions as we go through this, and we will get all of the goals and things put together hopefully this week, and we'll get a printout for next meeting, and then hopefully at the conclusion of this meeting, you can decide as to what departments you want to see, if you want to see them all, you want to see the ones with new requests, and things along those lines, because we need to move down the road. But we want to go over some things today with you, and then get some direction from you as to where you want to go with your budget. But all departments and agencies have returned their twenty, or 2014 budget worksheets, Lori has compiled the information, and we're in the process of assuring accurate information prior to bringing the spreadsheets to the county board following. Are several items of information and concern. We have approximately $447,000 in new requests. They include a FTE at Motor Vehicle, Information Services, the, that's Mark Shop, is asking for $50,000 worth of new software, and Tim is asking for $20,000 in the Internal Service Fund addition. Veteran Services is asking for some additional hours for a part-time employee for coverage. Corrections, that's a real challenging one, because you're well aware that DOC reduced six more beds effective 2014. All of those people are occupying space over in the county jail right now, and that's, so that's six beds that's going to go out of county next year, and I think the cheapest rate we have right now is $55 a day, and then there's medical costs that, there were medical costs anyway, but, and then she's added one person, and therefore, transportation issues in regards to additional employees. And I wasn't going to talk numbers today, but that's around $213,000 in new requests from hers. Then, just her regular budget is so in a suggestion, a suggested increase of like $160,000 because of medical costs of current prisoners and different things, too. So that's going to be sizable. Extension is. Extension is asking for a half-time position and I know this is gone before the, the extension committee, but-
They're, they're asking for a replacement for the one that was taken away four years ago or whatever.
Right, yep, yep.
They're just put back.
Yeah, but as, as we've instructed the, the departments is that what was taken away-
I understand.
They're gone, yeah. These are new requests now when they come back for filling positions.
Building and grounds you're talking about?
And building and grounds is, is asking for another full-time maintenance or for janitorial service. They, they get concerns all the time about staff and cleaning and things, especially over in the family service building. Social services, if I could've written the memo right now, we would've had numbers to put in there, but this was after your discussion this morning as to what direction you went.
So, so is that what was in regards to, was this issue?
Yes, it was.
You know, and, and really, Brian, and from my standpoint, the reason I supported that is it was, it was cost neutral.
That's right.
Had it not been cost neutral, as a matter of fact, it was cost savings really when you looked at it.
That's right, that's exactly right.
Having done that, I would've made the same objections that I made in the past that they should've gone through this exact process of the budget to do.
Yep, yep.
So, so, so this item has been resolved?
This been item resolved.
Okay.
Yep, that's a good, a good thing that we can get one of these off.
And we made money out of it.
Actually have a plus.
Yes, there should be.
That wouldn't be in the four forty-seven anyway because it wasn't unknown, right?
Uh, no, she, excuse me, Mr. Chair, what she had put in there was sixty thousand dollar increase within the four forty-seven.
So that's, we take that off.
So that will come out. Mm-hmm. And that's an adjustment we can make and, and before it comes to you. And juvenile detention had listed the, is looking at some changes and had not included in the new requests, so he had listed it in the regular budget.
Corrections, what were the, those two numbers? What's the total of those two numbers?
I, it was around four hundred thousand dollars.
That's ninety percent of the-
That's not the new request, it was about two hundred and thirteen thousand was new request for corrections, so, yeah.
That's the six beds.
That's the six beds.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, and that's, we have no choice.
Nope, it's gonna be-
Moving right along.
Other items of concern in the regular budgets, I mentioned corrections already included that in, in the other comment, the sheriff's office, the school resource officer, that will be somewhat offset by school revenues.
It was either thirty-one or thirty-four thousand dollars.
Thirty-one thousand. Thirty-one thousand. And we just determined that yesterday, so those, now we're plugging those figures in, so there was some, there was some work this week, the follow-up questions and as you can tell, we, we've talked about these. Probation, this was, I talked with Shelley yesterday on it and this was a, a huge loss. They have lost a grant funding that they could not put in here, but she assured me yesterday that they have applied for an OJP grant, the Office of Justice Programs grant. It's a three hundred thousand dollar grant for a two-year grant. If that, if she is successful with that, that will really help the budgeting process. That would be approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of revenue and hopefully by next week we will decide whether that should be put in there or not, because if they are granted positions, I know this board has been real concerned about granted positions being then picked up by the county and frankly, the way the budget is written right now, they're being picked up by the county and rather than being granted positions and, and we'll have to have quite a bit of discussion about that, I'm sure. Several outside agencies are requesting increases. Many of you serve on these, of these committees, so you know what's coming in. Lake Agassiz Library is looking at a, at an increase, Lake County Historical Society. We'll have these, all these listed out when we bring the figures to you, but we want those as accurate as possible when we bring them in and so they've been talked about. Sequestration, Commissioner Whelan mentioned that word this morning, that's affecting a lot of these. The senior coordinator position, just as an example, is asking for nine thousand dollar increase. That's about a thirty thousand dollar increase on, on the, or I'm sorry, a thirty percent increase. Right now, your contribution is about thirty thousand dollars or a little over to that senior coordinator position and because of sequestration and federal funding on it through some of the other departments, he's coming to us to ask for more in regards to that. There's been quite a bit of talk about the surveyor's budget going back to fifty thousand dollars from the forty thousand dollars, whether you'll wanna do that or not. Another issue and, and this is mentioned for, for you to put some thought into it as it progresses forward, but in twenty thirteen, there was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in reserves from the social service budget and two hundred and fifty thousand from public health from reserves were, were utilized or were obligated. And if you remember, we did not necessarily cut their spending amount, we suggested that that be funded through reserves if needed. I have spoken to Rhonda and she said they're running about pretty even this year and I know you're, you're gonna be waiting for that six-month report to see where the finances are and we need to get that into you too, but that just ended June thirtieth. But if she's utilizing the four, a hundred and fifty thousand this year that we took from the reserves to supplement that, that means that will have to be made up in your request or you will have to reduce the funding in order to make up that gap and it's a sizable gap when you put any increase on that, that may be needed for twenty fourteen just on regular programs, plus she had the four hundred and fifty. That's a, a big gap there in two hundred and fifty in public health. So there's some ground we need to make up there. Just some other things, we are currently projecting an MCIT dividend, last year was sizable. We've been reassured that with cutting the premiums and the investment dollars down, that the dividends aren't going to be as high, so I think Lori has hopefully, conservatively, is going to put in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there.
When does that number come up?
Uh, it's pretty soon.
August, July?
Yeah, by the end of August. Yeah, yeah. Employee health insurance, I think you heard from, from Human Resources this morning that you'll have that in, in August as well, we're projecting just using the figure of two hundred thousand right now, last year it was a three hundred thousand dollar increase, so let's hope it stays under-
Eleven percent.
Considerably, I think that's what it was last year. We'll be including a two percent cost of living adjustment and that's four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in, in the budget. County Program Aid, we have not received an official amount on that yet, but what we've received from AMC and, and the projections when the legislature was on, that that would be very close to the five hundred thousand dollars, so that's a real plus. And Lori has estimated, I asked her a while ago to, if she could give us an estimate on the sales tax which may be saved and that's, she figured five to six hundred thousand dollars. Hasn't really figured out how to distribute that yet.
Well, it's, you know, the biggest portion of that would be in the Internal Service Fund in the big chunks, but it's, you know, office supplies all the way down the line, so it's pretty hard to, little bits and pieces all over.
Did that start in first of January?
No, January first.
Twenty fourteen. That has not been included in there though, that'll help out our numbers if we can arrive at some kind of, unless we just use a figure just like we do with, with the cost of living increase in the health insurance and just put a number in there. The state legislature, you guys are all aware of this, the state legislature has imposed levy limits. We are checking on eligible exemptions. I know in other years, they have exempted debt payments, they have exempted law enforcement, you know, such as the jails with, with the squeeze that we're being put there and I don't know if you got an answer on that yet.
Well, today I filled out, there's a form that we have to send in to the Department of Revenue with our two thousand thirteen and two thousand twelve levies. Well, the only thing they asked for was bond payments. They asked for a number of other things, but we don't have any of those, so the only thing we had of the list was bond payments.
That might be a signal that-
Yeah.
They're not exempting law enforcement functions as they have other times that they have-
How long does that take Lori for them to care back?
I think we find out the middle of August.
Okay, we certainly have that time to, a month after that.
Right, yeah, I think it's, I think it's about the middle of August.
But I think we've seen as the economy has improved, demand on services have improved. Now, I'll just go back and, and say that, you know, Motor Vehicle is asking for an FTE. We haven't included all of the revenue increases either in this and I know they're expected to be up about seventy thousand dollars in revenue, that's gonna help.
But that, I have included that.
That, you've included that in the budget already, yeah, and, and, but those are some of the scenarios that you'll have to evaluate. I know as, if things stand the way they are, the assessors office fees will increase about twenty-nine thousand dollars for twenty fourteen, things like that, there's, there's some additional fees and things that help out. So I guess we're to the point where we can certainly have discussions on any of those issues, but what, would you like to start out with the departments coming before you that are asking for new requests? We can start setting those up, because we'll have the documents to you next week and-
I got a couple. I didn't see anything on there and saw a lot of conservation district. Did you get their request or?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, because I think their request is for around twenty-five thousand.
In additional funds? Yeah, I think their, Mr. Chair, I think their revenues or their grantings were-
Well, that's up too much. Their, I think their request was up.
A little bit, yeah.
A little bit from last year.
Yeah.
And you also mentioned sequestration. Why should that cost us more? I thought we were supposed to save money on that stuff.
On sequestration? Oh, no, we're not gonna save any money because what the federal government does is they have cut payments and cut some things to some of these federal entities that, that receive grants and the senior coordinators program gets money from some of the other entities and Commissioner Whelan mentioned it this morning and they get monies from here and there, federal dollars, well, those have dropped, you know, twenty percent or something along those lines, so if the service, if you wanna offer the service, then it falls back on the local taxpayer and it's the same with the state and the, and the federal government, so.
Well, it's, it's difficult until we know what the MCIT, you know, money is going to be and, and what our county program aid is going to be, it's really tough to, you know, I mean, to make any hard decisions, but-
Yeah.
I think probably the sooner we start hearing from the, the county departments, probably the better. How about, have you looked at, how does the reserves look for social services this year in, in public health? I mean, that's been helping us the last couple of budget cycles, so are they looking in pretty good shape again? Are we gonna see a substantial increase in that reserve?
No. Mr. Chairman, and, and in talking with Rhonda, she said her costs are really up, auto home placements and things are up, so she's, she feels she's gonna be pretty close to where she budgeted last year, including the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the reserves. That's what scares us a little bit. It'd really be nice if she was saying, yeah, we're gonna be about flat without taking the four fifty from reserves, so, but we're halfway through the year, so we'll have a good estimate on that very soon too. Lori said she can run those figures now for the first six months and, and I'll caution you on that too, I guess, and we always, and you're well aware of it, but many times there's payments that come out at the beginning of the year that will show maybe a, a larger use and then there's always bills that are outstanding that do get reconciled by the end of the year, because she goes into twenty fourteen quite a ways and applies it to the budget. So it is kind of a ballpark figure and, and you know that, so.
John?
I think they, I mean, we have to remember that we knew this with social service and, and public health, that if their, if their costs went up, that we would be, you know, having to, you know, to pay that out of the reserves because we, they had revenues over expenditures considerably for a couple of years and we decided that maybe, maybe they were, I don't know, under projecting their incomes.
Three years in a row.
So, and I think that we, we shouldn't be surprised that if the costs go up, that we have to use some of that, that money, but.
Right, and I think, you're absolutely right, but what, the problem that happens is when we fill a gap with reserve, then we've gotta, if, if we wanna stay flat, we'll have to make up those reserves sometime down the road, you know, but yeah.
It's unfortunate that we have levy, levy limits for two thousand fourteen because they're using two thousand thirteen as a base, so that means, and if levy limits were to continue, that means that four fifty is being cut every single year, not just a one time.
Yeah.
So it's, the timing was a bit unfortunate on that, so.
Well, some of the requests, you know, some of the outside agency requests, you know, we hadn't increased them for, what, four years or something?
Yep.
And so, I mean, I think it was, for instance, the Historical Society certainly will get by without the requested increase, but since they hadn't received one for a number of years, it was, I mean, that's why they asked for, for one, but it'd be more difficult for things like the senior coordinator position since that was a direct cut from funding that they currently have had, so they're gonna be in, in a tougher, tougher position than, than some of the others, I think, but.
John?
Well, in answer your question, Brian, I, I think, I think I'd like to hear back from Lori and maybe your department head over at the Motor Vehicle Department too and I, the demands that are going on there are significant, just with the amount of traffic that you're dealing with there, if there was a place that's really overloaded right now with customers, that's one of them, so I'm, I'm interested in that. I think we gotta try to, you know, that's our taxpayers going in there and they're spending an awful long time waiting in line and they're frustrated and we need to try to improve that service, so I, I'm actually, and, and I think what will help in that decision, Lori, would be how we can show that your, the increased traffic, what's that's raised in, in revenue. I think we need that here and on the record to help support that, because I, I think that's an area of, of real concern. We haven't even talked yet about how we're gonna, how we would fund the whole potential remodeling that's, we wanna see done over there, so that's another issue that's, some of that's gonna come out of two thousand fourteen money, I would think, we gotta find it someplace. In terms of who else to see, you know, I wouldn't mind talking to Robbie to see on the building and grounds, you know, could they, could they get by with something less or how, how serious is that? The juvenile detention, I think we're gonna have a discussion with, with him today and, that, that becomes more than just this board, it's, it's how we're gonna keep all of our member counties satisfied too and, and making sure that that stays within reason, so, but we'll start with that today with, with him. This is the first I'm hearing about the veteran service thing and maybe, maybe Grant can provide us with information on, on what would be needed there.
I think they're in the same boat as Motor Vehicle, you know, there's a just ever increasing number of clients that they're dealing with because of, you know, all the veterans being discharged now, so their numbers are just, you know, continuing to go up and they've got more and more people wanting services and they're trying to keep up, so.
And I, and I really think it's important for us to talk to Julie again. There's not a whole lot we can do about that two hundred and thirteen, but I'd really like to understand, because we currently have staff that's, that's transporting and does it require one more full-time people, because we have six more people to transport? I, I don't know if that's, that doesn't quite compute to me, you know, so I think we should, we should hear from Julie on that one. And I think the other ones are, you know, I, I think the key is gonna be what these levy limits do and, and what this sheet ends up bringing, so, because I, I have a hunch we're gonna probably have to really take the chisel out in some areas and try to find some-
Our, our anticipated levy increase is very minimal, so if, if our calculations aren't correct, but hopefully they're not.
And right now with all the things that we, that we could be looking at, an eleven, twelve percent proposed increase.
I did watch, but that's-
That's wrong.
Well, we thought we went through it independently, came up with very close to the same figure. Mine was right, yours was wrong first.
Okay.
Okay, well, and, and we'll, we'll get some, we've really, we've done a lot of follow-up to try to get some of this information, because we wanna bring you as much organization to it as possible, so.
And you were asking about departments, I think at the minimum, we wanna hear from corrections.
Yeah.
You, you mentioned Robbie, certainly social service. I don't know if public health, if you have indication there, is it the same thing with them or, as with social service?
Yes, it is. In fact, they're both kind of in the same boat, is that with using reserves last year, their, their, their request is, is, well, I mean, between the two of them, it's well over a million dollars because of- million dollars because of the gap in it. So we'll have to look at how you want to do that.
Then we should visit them.
Yeah, that's right. Very good.
Brian, you'll be next on your report.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll be done for the day. We haven't paid the bills.
I move we do so.
Second. One favor, say aye. Bills are paid.
Well, Mr. Chair on reports, I had a discussion with Bruce Jaster and Tim this last week and it might be a small thing, but we wanted to run it by you. For years and years and years, they've been trapping mosquitoes in three different locations and he said nobody asked them for the information. They trap mosquitoes, they take them over, they have them tested over at Vector Control in Fargo. But he said with the addition of the workload that they have with all of the restaurants and the swimming pools and all of the food preparation, they just don't have the time. And we've, I've communicated with Kathy in public health, thinking that this was a public health responsibility and obligation, and she said no. She thought, she said that has been, been done for years and years and years. It started way back when. I don't know if the state made a request looking for mosquitoes with, I want to say hepatitis, but it's not hepatitis, it's...
West Nile.
West Nile, there you go. And, well, I said, you know, if, if nobody's requesting the information, do we need to do it? And I said I would bring it to you folks for a discussion whether you want us to continue. We will have to probably hire some temporary help or something to go out and do the collections. It's twice a week, four hours roughly a time.
What if West Nile is detected, then what?
That's, that's, that's the point. I guess what do you do? You detect it, it's going to be detected in Fargo as well as it's going to be detected here.
Then does it go to the state, to the states or to the local entity like our public health?
Well, then it's a public health issue, yeah.
I think it's well worthwhile to keep it.
I guess I'm, if nobody's looked, been looking at it, are they turning it in to even public health, the results? Or it's only if they have a negative, negative find that they would turn it in?
I suppose, yeah, if West Niles is detected and the mosquitoes...
Seems to me we could, we could certainly drop it for now anyway and reinstate it if there's a concern, if public health needs it. I, I assumed that if we were doing that, that public health was, it was required by public health.
I did too. But it could be a little politically sensitive, that's why I'm bringing it to you folks.
We should talk to Kathy about that.
Well, you know, I think it's, it's, you know, if we're assisting other entities of government in trying to determine counts as to when spraying is needed, Clay County doesn't have a vector control.
Right.
We don't charge for it, we don't have any revenue source for it, but if we have the ability to assist in obtaining those, to know when counts are getting drastic or to where there is a West Nile, we can give it, you know, I think, I think one of the places always, has always been in Oakport.
Mm-hmm.
Because Bruce has always told me, they go out and collect them in Oakport.
Yep.
The fact of the matter is, is if we can provide that information to Oakport, then Oakport has their mechanism for dealing with it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so, so it's, I don't, I kind of agree with Wayne and I don't know that we need to eliminate it, but we certainly need to share the information that we collect. If we're not sharing the information, then, then that just doesn't make any sense. But I'll tell you what, if there's any one thing that people in Clay County would be willing to see us spend a little nickel on, it's mosquitoes.
Mosquitoes. And not only, I'll pass for now. Any other comments on this?
Well, and I, I kind of anticipated that, but I guess I didn't, we didn't want to drop it or continue without your additional approval of it. And, and what we'll do is we will make some arrangements and maybe even vector control for just maybe a small amount. Maybe we'll introduce service the Oakport one because they use that for their information in determining, the other two locations are Barnesville and Holly.
I was going to say, even if the results are positive, that information should be distributed.
Yeah.
And it's, I think it's worth the money we spend if we do have positive. Just like if we purchase health insurance or life insurance, we hope we never have to use it, but we have to pay for it in one.
And, and we'll move quickly on that. We figured we'd probably have to expend about $2,500 maybe for a...
Do you want a consensus of this group here before you?
I do, but I think we just received it.
Okay, thank you.
It's enough head nods, so, thank you very much. Highway tracking, that's, you've had the presentation that we spent the most time on the last time and so I spent quite a bit of time with Rhonda and Larry and Susan in regards to the Affordable Care Act this, this last week.
Did you? Did he?
And spent some time with Darren and Jennifer in preparation for the insurance committee that we're preparing some examples and things for the committee so they understand the different options that we talked about at the last committee meeting. We had management team meeting, went, well, we talked about the various aspects of personnel issues, had a little training and things. Also had some contacts, or contact or two in regards to the August 1st issue, again regards to the marriage thing amendment on August 1st. We keep dealing with that just a little bit. Nothing's changed there, explained that it was a court decision and we support the courts and that, so. Tended the county fair and that was on the heel of the, we had land management in the afternoon and then the diversion board meeting in the, later on in the afternoon and I don't really think there's any, any issues that weren't covered by these two gentlemen.
Right. Did you feel that the Thursday evening was preferable to the Wednesday afternoon for the people to be out there?
I thought, yeah, Mr. Chair, I thought there was an awful good crowd out at that fair Thursday evening, but there wasn't a lot of people stopping by the booths. And they were available, there was few that stopped by, asked some questions. But I think, and we talked about this, that being available is probably good. It's nice that there's probably not a lot of questions, not a lot of complaints, not a lot of concerns, because I think people would take the time to look us up. They were, kept announcing all evening that it was government night and we were set up right there and things, so. And I guess you guys get a good, good feel of that as well when you're out to your meetings and the amount of calls you get and things. I, we don't get a lot of necessarily complaints, so.
Anything else, gentlemen? We're adjourned.